I don't know. 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 They're really nice job. Sometimes makes it work. Very cool. I think that Jacob did a good job. Well, gradually started. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So. I've got to be more careful, too. See, crazy. She's the one. She was two down here. I like that. I like that. I don't know. Yeah. Except for when it's called eighteen. Uh, space. I'm just. I mean, it's very exciting. Yeah. So. I've got to be more careful, too. Yeah. See, crazy. She's the one. She was two down here. I can't see that again. Jim Ross. If I've been. I like that. I like that. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. December twenty fifth is called eighteen. Uh, space. I'm just. I mean, it's very exciting. Yeah. Yeah. What's this nation? It's been there. Yeah. 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 Right where you are. Yeah. I think so. I'm sure that's. Yeah. 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 I'm sure that's. Yeah. 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 We're going to bring tonight's meeting to order. If everyone would be seated, please. Turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. We do have a forum from Planning Commission. And I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Anybody got any suggested changes or whatever? Got all in favor, say aye. Aye. Q? Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. Uh. It should be a good meeting, it looks like. Quite a few people here tonight. Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is read the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission Involved Meeting. Anybody got any proposed changes? Pardon me, I messed up again. But everyone, please stand and join us in the congratulations, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. It's outside. We all know what it looks like. Look at that one. Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, the Republic of Canada, the United States of America. Thank you. I apologize for that little error again. Okay, the minutes from the April twenty-one, April seventh, twenty twenty-one minute, uh, meeting. Anybody got any proposed changes? I'm sure everybody's read that. Uh, if not, can I get a motion to approve those minutes? At a first? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Uh. We have three cases on tonight's agenda for the Planning Commission. The, uh, Board of Supervisors has a presentation later on after this meeting of the, uh, uh, Central Virginia Electric Cooperative and Firefly on the broadband issue. So I recommend everybody stick around for that. It's very important. First case on tonight's agenda is case number S P dash zero five dash two one dash O three. The site plan has been submitted that by Dr. Oscar Vega to develop a two point two four acre, uh, business zone parcel. The subject parcel is located in a phase, phase one of South Park Business Park, adjacent to the Food Lion Shopping Center. The parcel is proposed to be improved by two-story dental and general office-based building with parking. The parcel is identified on the Mass County Tax Map Number as forty-eight dash thirteen Q. Mr. Webb, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so I would just like people to, I think it's a good opportunity to see where we are on phase one. Everybody hear me okay? See where we are on phase one of this development. And just on that page one, I just talked about how the road, road ray, uh, has been constructed properly. Um, stormwater controls are in place. Uh, we're still waiting, I think, for some more grass to, to sort of, uh, to grow. And then it would be sort of completely stabilized. Uh, and then that will be sort of, uh, everything on phase one will have been satisfactory completed. Um, the only other thing is, Mr. Baines, today, that one little revision that V dot wanted to note about the future public, I think, future public road, uh, that was changed. He has those hard copy, he has a hard copy of those plans that I'll take with me, I assume, and I have a digital copy. The only other thing that is of interest is, you know, we do have the site, it's perked. Um, Mr. Ho, Hoag, Hoag has been out there and perked the site. I believe it's been filed with the Health Department, but they do know it's, it will perk. Uh, the only, uh, sort of thing we're waiting on, I think the applicant's waiting on is the actual architectural plan. So that will sort of, sort of dictate the size of the drain field. I'm totally comfortable with, with approving this, we're still waiting on that. You know, we don't issue a build permit till we have that squared away. Um, and there is still an outside chance that potentially they could hook into public utilities. Uh, we know the water's there, the water, the line is there, has been installed, everything's good there. So really pretty straightforward site plan here and excited to see a project moving forward in that business park. And we look, work to other projects, but so far, uh, we, we're very happy with the way everything is proceeded in the development.
Questions from the Planning Commission? Peter?
Yeah, at the workshop, Legan, you'll remember that someone raised the question, is the applicant, uh, going to have to get Department of Quality approval? As D Q suggested some many months ago. Uh, can we know the answer?
Yeah, that's, that's a good, good question. Um, I did talk to Matt about that. So when it's over an acre, D Q gets the stormwater plan. And, uh, it has, it's, it's at D Q's office and Matt was literally today was, he's expecting the approval any day now on the D Q. That all, everything that's on the plan is there. So that is a good point to bring up. And sorry, I didn't mention it, but that would be the only thing that we are waiting on. But I, I suspect, again, according to Mr. Ailer.
Are you in touch with D Q?
I don't, Matt, our E and S person sends the plans and he's in touch. So I, I even, like I said, I, I touched base with him just today about that, that he expects that administrative approval from D Q in any day now. Pete?
I guess one of the questions I got, Legan, if we don't have an architectural plan and we do have approved drain field and we don't know how many rooms or what square foot's going to be to the buildings, is that going to change what the septic guy hooked at or sewer guy hooked at? Say, wait a minute, the building is bigger than, but I anticipated only being that now this may not work. And the second question is, uh, they're not going to hook to, to, to the town water and the water is right there, right?
Oh, they, they are hooking to the town water. Everything's there.
Town water.
Uh, uh, on, I, I don't, I really don't suspect that the building's going to be any, any, any real, uh, you know, we're looking at nine thousand square feet. Mr. Baines is here and it might be better to have him a- answer that.
We will call him in a minute.
Okay, yeah, I'll let him answer that, that question, if that's okay.
Any other questions for the Planning Commission? If not, is the applicant present? Would you like to come up and discuss this?
Good evening, my name's Lee Baines. I'm a civil engineer and call pepper. I'm working for, um, Mr. Oscar, Dr. Oscar Vega, Vega. Uh, he apologized, couldn't be here tonight. Um, so, um, any questions? I understand there's some, uh, questions about the size of the building. We're currently working on the, uh, he's currently working to get the architectural plans completed. As far as wastewater flows, uh, we, we've done a wastewater characterization study. We have, uh, a, an estimated flow that we need to treat. Um, the, that's probably going to require, um, a little more than a septic tank. We're going to, we're going to have to probably do some treatment, uh, before we, uh, put that in the septic, uh, field. And we're trying to nail that down because the bottom floor, uh, the top floor is going to be the dental office. The bottom floor is going to basically be leased space. So, uh, we're, we're modifying some numbers based on what that potential use could be, uh, so we can nail down how much, exactly how much flow we're going to have. Um, we're comfortable with the, with the drain field. The drain field, uh, was located and, uh, delineated by Tom Hogg. Uh, all of the lots, uh, there are a number of drain fields that have been located on the property. Uh, this is one of them. Um, so we know what that drain field can take and flow. Um, there's a possibility we may, uh, we're exploring, looking, uh, to try to connect to the public sewer if we could with RSA. I talked to Lynn Clements the other day. Um, as you all know, the availability in the, uh, in the sewer plant here in town, there is no availability. There's, uh, there's, there's capacity, but no availability, no available EDUs. So we need to work with, uh, we're exploring who has, who might have excess EDUs, uh, available that could be purchased by the owner. Um, so we're just in the beginnings of those, uh, discussions and we want to see if that's going to be an option for us. Um, really because we feel like public sewer is going to give us a much better option, uh, for, and flexibility in the building, inside the building. Uh, as far as the comments that we've had on the site plan, V dot, uh, very minor comments. Uh, call pepper sold the water, we had, uh, just a few comments there that were minor. Um, and D Q, uh, we are, we need to hear back from them, uh, here pretty soon, we hope. Um, D Q has a sixty-day review cycle, so, and it could be probably day fifty-nine and a half before we get a, get any back from them. It's pretty typical.
Any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the general public? Anyone out there have a question about this issue or this application? If not, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I guess I have a question for the, for Sean. So if we approve this, part of the motion should be based on approval from D D Q and based on approval from the Health Department?
I believe so, yes.
But V dot is not an issue. If I read this letter correctly?
No.
With the D Q and Health Department.
And even just for, even if your motion didn't include that, would, nothing wrong with the motion including that, that's, that's a good idea. You know, again, administratively, until we had his approval, we're not going to issue a build permit. So it's just kind of back to this conversation we've been having on, on these, these items. But we're, we're really kind of at the, as far as this particular project, we're, we're really right there at, at, at the end. And I, I'm comfortable with, with where we're at and I think they've done a good job of, of making sure all the approvals are in place. Uh, so if that was part of the, the motion, make sure that.
Well, it's, it's not that the Planning Commission has an issue with that. It is, it's the county ordinance requires that and we cannot work around that. And we have been chastised about that in the past. So that's where we're coming from.
Yeah, I don't think the ordinance actually says it has to be in place. I think it, I think.
It has to have V dot and, and Health Department approval, I think, if I read the ordinance correctly.
Yeah, I, I'll have to look at it, but I did read it, uh, recently and I believe it, you know, it doesn't use the word required. I mean, um, and again, most of these functions in a lot of communities are administrative, you know, in, in, in most site plans. But.
Again, we have been told, okay, by the legal department that these, we should have Health Department and V dot approval on these applications before we make a recommendation to a Board of Supervisors for approval. That's the way the ordinance reads. That's why the question came from Pete the way it is. Uh, Mr. Greg, would you like to comment on that?
I think that your statement as to what the current county ordinance says is, is correct. Um, what, uh, Mr. Elliott suggested is possible workaround in terms of, you know, recommendation is probably under the circumstances until this issue is further clarified is probably the best way.
Agree, I just tried to clarify that we need to put those stipulations in there if we're going to make a recommendation on this. So I got a motion. I got one motion, go ahead.
Um, this question, Legan, um, whether the Planning Commission can conditionally recommend the, the Supervisors can conditionally prove. My mind is a very important question. I think it's something that, uh, we would all benefit from you, Sean, working together on. Um, from my perspective as a Planning Commission member, I can't see any reason why the Planning Commission couldn't conditionally recommend the Supervisors conditionally approve if the applicant were then required, um, to present proof to you as the family planner and zoning administrator, um, that it subsequently had got V dot and or Health Department approval. I, I think this is an issue that we really ought to address in some depth. Uh, and perhaps the starting place for that is the conversation between you and Sean.
Yeah, and I look at, I, I, I believe, again, my read through the ordinance and I've done a lot of times is I, I do not, and I, again, just off the top of my head, I do not believe it says it's. I know the state code that we're fine to do it this way. We're not in any way violating state code, but again, in most places, these things, they tend to be administrative. I'd argue the point, but I will take a really clear look at it because last time I read it, I did not see a required. It seems to me it's sort of a recommendation that's in the ordinance. Um, so, yeah, we can look at it, but as far as efficiency and moving things through and kind of, you know, uh, when, when folks come in with, with, uh, projects like this that often have a lot of moving parts and sometimes loose sense, this is a very simple project. And I've worked on hospitals and things that have so many more sort of moving parts that, uh, you know, these are two really small administrative functions. So if our, our code does say that, which I'm not so sure it does, then we should probably look into making amendment.
I agree with that.
Yeah, right.
You know, I think we ought to take a hard look at it and if it's possible legally to do it.
Right.
Um, to grant conditional, uh, recommendation, conditionally, we ought to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, um.
I have a motion, but I will not.
Okay.
I just asked the question, what we need to do.
Okay. All right, wait a minute, anybody else on the Planning Commission comment?
We need to have a session where it says.
Thank you.
Written by information.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pete?
Mr. Charles, I make a motion, the case number S P dash fifteen dash twenty-one dash O three. We recommend it to the board for approval with approval coming from the D D Q and from, uh, Health Department to file approval.
Second. I got first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. The number, yeah, was, uh, S P zero, zero five, not fifteen.
Zero five. Sorry. That whole name.
Okay, moving on. All right, anybody from the audience got something they want to say? If not, let's move on. Uh, okay, next, next case on the agenda is case number S U zero five dash two one dash zero four. Judith and Lisa McCannon have submitted a special use permit application to operate a primitive campground on an agriculture zone parcel. The parcel is two, twenty-two point four acres and in a A one zoning district, a primitive campground requires a special use permit. The applicants are proposing a total of four campsites and per submitted proffers, if approved, a special use permit will not be transferable or signable. In addition, the applicants are required to follow Virginia Department of Health guidelines regarding onsite bathroom facilities and potable water. The subject parcel is located on Duette Road, Route six forty-two. To date, does not have a postal address. The parcel is identified on the Mass County Tax Map as Tax Map Number twenty-two dash forty-five. Mr. Webb, you have anything you want to add?
This is, uh, in the last, I guess, uh, ten years, we've had a lot of interesting things happen in, I don't know, rural tourism, I guess you could say, with Airbnb. Um, something that I never heard of until ten years ago and now it just sort of, we just use the word like it's, you know, an everyday talk. Um, sort of out of a, a, a new trend with the, that smartphones and online apps have given us the ability for now people are camping and it's become very popular, um, sort of like Airbnb. Um, these apps are now proliferating and, uh, folks are, are using this, this app to, to sort of maximize income potential, um, uh, sort of in a similar fashion that folks had with, with Airbnb. Um, but this particular project, you know, I've written a lot here and, and as I've said, I do believe that this type of, this type of, uh, industry or business is really, uh, you know, compared to maybe ag uses, it's, it's kind of similar in, in some respects, but I think it's, it's, it's probably in a lot of respects, so compared to buy right ag uses, it's probably, uh, sort of less obtrusive and in some ways could be sort of maybe environmentally friendlier. Um, you know, talking to Mr. Buchanan, Mr. Buchanan, uh, you know, the, the income that's generated from these is, is, you know, he's pretty frank. It's, it's pretty, it's, uh, they have a pretty easy time, uh, securing bookings and, and things like that. So, um, having looked at this, uh, and looking at the comprehensive plan for the county, I do think it fits really well in, um, with, with the comprehensive plan and the vision of the county as a, as a tourism destination and again, kind of a low impact sort of, uh, use. Folks come visit the county, they visit breweries and vineyards and all these type of things. I do, you know, that, that money is sort of recycled around, around the community. Uh, the county also can collect transit occupancy taxes. Um, in this particular use, and again, Mr. Buchanan's been, Mr. Buchanan has been very forward and complying with regulations that have, have been put before us, that they have. Uh, you see the letter that I, I got from, uh, Emily Borden from the Health Department, uh, and as she says in the email, this is approved, that everything is, is good, that they will be issuing a campground permit. Um, uh, I talked to Jamie, uh, we're, we're clear on the fabric that's being used for the tents. Of course, one of the conditions that I recommend is that, you know, there don't, there are no fire sources in the, in, in the tents. And of course, he, he wasn't, you know, the Buchanan's weren't planning on doing that anyway, but just to be clear. Um, as far as a nine-one-one address, uh, he does, you know, and the, the Buchanan's have owned this property for a little over, I think, about twenty years. So, but as far as a nine-one-one address, uh, I did talk to Mr. Gordon and, and the building official. Uh, we don't have any issue with providing them with a nine-one-one address for safety purposes. Uh, if there is some issue, they have to get there. We think a nine-one-one address is important to have. So, uh, getting them with a nine-one-one address is a pretty straightforward process, could take probably a week. Um, so that gets us to the V dot, um, entrance. There is an entrance there, an existing entrance. Um, it has been used for many years and obviously it's, it's, uh, when we send this to, when I sent this to V dot for review, um, you know what? Uh, they, they came back and basically said that, or as the V dot, kind of the book goes, uh, you need two fifty on each side of site distance. Um, I want to say, looking to the west on Duette Road, you have about hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy in that curve. So by the book, it does not satisfy that requirement. Now, I did talk to Adam Moore yesterday and I'll just be very honest with you, is looking at this and considering that Delaney Mountain has, is, you know, before you get to his entrance, you have Delaney Mountain that has nine, nine, um, about nine houses on that. Looking at Duette Road with about seventy trips a day, that was a twenty seventeen traffic count. Um, this is my personal opinion as a planner and someone who's kind of worked in these, these items and looked at traffic for many years. Um, I find the, the requirement that he moved the driveway a hundred feet, uh, well, not even, it'd be somewhere around, you know, about ninety feet. Um, I find it burdensome and a little bit, and I talked to Adam yesterday, Mr. Moore, it's, it's a little bit sort of strange because, you know, obviously if he was doing some ag uses up there that could generate more traffic or if he's, if he's subdividing it, he already has an entrance. So there are probably some buy right uses that V dot would never even look at this, that he, that, you know, they could potentially use the property for that, but never even go before them. And Mr. Moore sort of understands that, yes, there's really no, they, they don't have any control over, uh, over that. But yes, he does see where, you know, one could look at that and say, uh, you know, there, there's, you know, if you built a five-bedroom house and air beat and beat it, it would be maybe potentially more, uh, more traffic than the four primitive campsites. Um, so when it comes to the interest, uh, entrance and Mr. Moore is pretty clear that he sent it to us, so we'll give you our recommendation that, um, that the county, that some, some localities don't even ask for any recommendations for special use permits, not necessarily in this residency, but he said it's not uncommon. Um, I've been down there, I've talked to Brian about the accidents on that road and, you know, we talk about being business friendly and all these good things. Um, I, I just, from a planning perspective, and again, you're the, you're policymakers, you're the decision makers, I, I, I just have a hard time looking in the face of them. It's got to spend ten thousand dollars to move a driveway a hundred feet, tie into an existing driveway when there just really doesn't seem to be any evidence that using that existing entrance is, is dangerous. I, I just don't, I just don't see it. Um, so from that entrance and talking to Adam and being very clear that, you know, we, and I'll say this, wherever I've been, the V dot officials that I've worked with, we've got a good one here in Charlottesville, they're, they're quick, they're responsive, they get out, they tell you, you know, they'll call you back, they have answers, but they do have a. But they do have a, kind of a manual that sometimes I think leaves a logic a little bit in the dust, but they'll admit, I think they understand that too. So as I see it with the entrance, um, and again, just, just, just my opinion, you might see it differently, and that, that's fine. Um, you, we could approve this as it is. Um, and it's well within our right as a county, as Mr. Powell, to do that. Uh, uh, another option is obviously to, if, if you're inclined to approve, um, say satisfied VDOT requirements. Um, I think a third option that might be kind of splitting the difference is to have me and Mr. Gordon, he's in emergency services, to maybe meet with him in six months and report back about this entrance. And if there's any issues or any, any, uh, problems that might, uh, present themselves, then maybe we want that entrance. Um, but I think you have the, the flexibility, uh, to approve it as it is. Um, or again, satisfied VDOT, or again, maybe potentially split something in the middle. So I've thought, I've thought long and hard about this, and I try to think about my own self. I'm sitting here, so I do part-time, how I would look at it, and I would look at it personally as kind of a burden on a business. And I, I think it makes, it's limited to four. You know, it's not transferable, we know who's going to run it, have full confidence that they're going to nice place. It'll generate revenue, it's a, it's a, it's a business that, uh, again, it's in our comp plan all over tourism, tourism, tourism. Um, I just, I personally just believe my, my best, my putting my, my best planner's hat on and giving you the best advice, I do believe that the requirement to move that entrance is just not grounded in, and, uh, in this particular case, uh, not grounded in, I believe, sort of on the ground logic as I see it. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, any questions from the planning commission?
Comment maybe. You know, the gentleman like Liggins says, well, that means it's just an entrance. Ladies and gentlemen, we have more people there than we would have with them. I, I hate to see these folks spend this down money. It takes a long time to rent tents to generate that money back with something that's really not needed.
Hmm, anyone else?
And I also, the bottom line concern is public health and safety and welfare, that's what we're hearing. And, and I guess I'll just say last thing is, I, I feel confident if, if we did leave it where it was, and maybe had a review period, we would not be in any way violating, I, you know, what we want to promote that safety and welfare.
Yeah, thank you. Bottom line is, we have to follow what's in the county ordinance and our recommendations. So, and our personal feelings aside, I, I think this would be a, a very good addition to Madison County, and I hope it's successful. Uh, at the same time, we do have to make our recommendations to the Board of Supervisors based on what is in the ordinance at present. And if I understand it, we do not have VDOT approval, and, but the Health Department seems like they have signed off on this. So, Mr. Greg?
I believe you're reading the code act.
Okay. So without, uh, I don't think we have a total sign off with the Health Department, and we definitely don't have a sign off with VDOT. And the ordinance as it is currently written requires that if we are going to make a recommendation to Board Supervisors. That's, uh, my feeling on this. However, I have no problem with someone making that recommendation, subject to those, uh, items. But first off, would the applicants, uh, like to have any comments on this, please?
Hi, I'm Chad Buchanan, this is my wife Lisa Buchanan. We've owned the property for over sixteen years now. We've been camping on it, visiting it, we've been using it, just loving the area. And, um, we've recently just sold our house in Arlington, and we're going to build a house out here. We rented a cabin a couple driveways down. Um, this is a way for us to bring in some income for our family, but also to bring people into the area and help out, um, the tourism in Madison County. So we've had people, we've had campers up there, or as friends and family, fifteen, twenty people on, on a Memorial Day weekend or Labor Day weekend, and we've, uh, had no issues with that driveway. If you look at the Delaney Mountain Road, it's a state road, it's even closer to that blank curve with more people on that blank curve. So I really don't see a big issue with that, with this. I've had a person come out on Saturday and give me a price to move my driveway, and it was almost ten thousand dollars. So I know the county order, what the county ordinance, ordinance says. I also know that the state comes in, they said they would, this is up to the county, this is just their recommendation. So, um, I really feel like that's just being really aggressive and stopping, you know, this little business we have going on. Uh, it's something that we're really proud of. I have a bunch of neighbors that I've known for fifteen, twenty years, we've been up there, there's business owners here. There's people, friends that I've just met on the county commission that are my neighbors. As far as I know, you probably never knew we had campers, us up there, right? So I think I brought a lot of businesses, just building these decks I've built. And mowing my property, I've just brought, I brought money in. And now we're going to move out here and we'll be full-time residents. I feel like I'm already part of the community, even though I'm not a resident here, but we've been here for sixteen plus years. And it's just, it's my, it's my happy place. It's where I come to really, to, just to get away from it all, and now I'm going to be here full-time, and I, and I just want to make this thing work. So, um, we should talk.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to have four cars there on, at the busiest time. And again, you know, Delaney Mountain Road is, you know, we sit there, we listen to traffic. It being many cars going up and down, everybody's fine. Um, I don't drive more than fifteen miles per hour on Duette Road. Um, I, I just, it, it seems like a ridiculous speed to go higher than that. I, I don't see this as a safety issue, but you all have to do what you have to do. But we're super excited to get started, and, um, we do bring friends and family here. First thing we do is we hit the wineries, go to the restaurants, and we're really, really trying to push this county. One of the most beautiful places we think that exists in Virginia, and we like sharing that with people.
Questions for the applicants? Peter?
Um, I, I think all of this, as you tell, I think that this is a worthy project that we would like to see materialize. Um, it would be very difficult in these circumstances to get ultimate approval, though, given VDOT's position. My question is, have you tried to reach some kind of accommodation with VDOT other than just, uh, having VDOT impose a solution on you? Have you negotiated with them at all?
No, they, they just came out last week, I believe, like, you know.
Yeah.
And so we do, I do have a person that I know that works there, he gave me some suggestions, whether it's signage at the top of the hill, said a hidden driveway. Um, it's thirty-five miles an hour in the front of our, our property, so people aren't going fast either anyway. So there are other things, I'm going to try, I have to get the person back out again. I had a, a former VDOT official stop out two days ago, he said it's fine. And so he had his little wheel and he measured everything. So I don't have the wheel, all I have is a twinkle tape measure, but this guy, this person told me that it was fine. So, um, I'm waiting to talk to him personally, he went through a contractor and said he stopped there and measured.
I would really urge you to find a compromise, and not just accept their dictate, but, but try to find a solution that's feasible for you and feasible for them. Um, we'd love to see that, as, uh, sure, there are people in the county government, uh, that would be happy to support you with that. Uh, but this is a, this is a good project, we'd like to see it happen, but I don't see how we can approve it, given VDOT's current position, which is a negative. So I would look to, to you to, you know, take the lead in finding a solution.
Do a temporary injunction, like where we can get this thing up and running, and then work with VDOT, whether to either remove the driveway or muscle the situation?
Uh, I, for me, in your position, I'd try to, in a meeting with somebody barely high up, and, and VDOT, I'd have a video of the, of the scene, and, uh, I'd have some ideas on how to solve this problem short of spending ten thousand dollars. Uh, for the area.
Regarding the Health Department, they are on board, so it's, it's, they've approved the way we're going to dispose of the waste, and they're just waiting for the S R P to be issued so that I could have the pet crib be dug and permitted. So the Health Department's on board totally. So it's just the VDOT driveway issue.
Okay, we, we just, the planning commission just makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors will make the ultimate decision on this. Uh, we're just trying to get to the bottom of some of the issues to make sure everybody understands exactly what's going on. Uh, anybody else on the planning commission have a question? Fay?
Yes, um. In my years on this board, I do believe that I can remember, and I know others can too, that we have made various adjustments with what VDOT has recommended, Yoder Place being one. It made much more sense to do it the way it's done, uh, at this moment with the crossover, that being one of the first that I saw that was so sensible and, um, worked out really well. Um, frankly, I think we need to use some common sense too with some of this. This were on a fifty-five mile an hour highway on, um, you know, the bypass or, or even twenty-nine, yeah, some recommendations. But, um, or even just a state road might, but I know there's, there are properties all over the place that maybe don't quite have that site distance, but we have had to give it to them because of various reasons. Um, frankly, I've been down that road many times, people are not going to go too fast, it's not going to be on the state's paving anytime soon to widen it and all that, that is not going to happen. Um, so I would like to see us make some adjustments, as we can, according to what I understood Liggins to say, that we could go and not have to follow VDOT's. They're not requiring it, their recommendation is what it is. I would like to see us, um, use some common, common sense, and I really wouldn't have a problem with evaluating it after six months. Uh, truly, I mean, I don't know, that's probably just because we haven't done it before or whatever, it's not good enough for me. So I'd like some common sense.
Thank you, Fay. Steve?
Um, two questions, first, is there any building permit associated with this?
No, the, the new, the new house that we built, hopefully it'll follow the.
So this question may be moot, because the requirement for the VDOT approval is that to build a permit. This particular case, that's way reached. It's, not all special use permits require VDOT approval, or the Health Department. And if there's no, no building permit, that's the question. The wording in the code says it's, that's for building permit, they have to have the VDOT. And I do say, I think, first of all, to me, this is not a commercial entrance, you know what I'm talking about, more campsites.
Commercial?
Yeah, they call it. So.
So what you're saying is that our ordinance does not require VDOT approval unless there's a building permit involved? Okay?
We had a discussion of this earlier, we've been looking at that. There are some special use permits that simply don't require VDOT or Health Department.
Mr. Greg, would you like to chime in on that?
Well, that's the first I have heard that it would not be applicable. And candidly, I was not aware that there was an issue with this until about ten minutes before this meeting began tonight. Um, Mr. Herbert, you may be correct. I mean, I just have not reviewed the issue. Uh, I am not comfortable with any opinion on that, I cannot, quite honestly.
Thank you, all right. Everybody heard what Steve said? I do not have the ordinance in front of me, but he just read it, and he said it's only up to the building permits, we will review that and find out if that is the case, but right now, let's assume that it is.
Which section? This is part fourteen, and we're looking at fourteen one, yeah, fourteen one. It wasn't building, but yeah, it must have been.
Mr. Chairman, we're recommended by, and I recommend it, case number SU dash oh five dash twenty-four, dash twenty-one dash oh four. We recommend it to the Board of Supervisors for approval, and that's the second.
Comments? A first, second? All in favor, say aye. Mr. Herbert, correctly, I would vote for it also. All opposed? Thank you very much. Thank y'all, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next issue, next case. Let's see if I can read all this correctly. Case number SU zero five dash two-one dash zero five. On behalf of the Madison County Board of Supervisors and Emergency Services, Network Building and Consulting has submitted an indefinite special use permit application to develop a wireless communication facility. Proposed wireless communication facility will provide public and safety radio coverage, a direct line to site microwave connectivity for the county's public safety system. The subject of one eighty-one point one acres is own agriculture. Uh, parcel is known as Hoover Ridge Park. And per Article, Section fourteen dash three dash four, using a, use requires a special use permit for a wireless communication facility exceeding one hundred feet in height, requiring a special use permit. Wireless communication facility would be confined to roughly a fifty-fifty square foot fenced compound, and the lattice tower provided height would be a hundred and ninety-five feet with an attached four-foot lightning rod. The subject property is located owner near Hoover Ridge, uh, and is owned by Madison County Board of Supervisors. The subject parcel is identified on Madison County Tax Map forty-eight dash forty-three C. This property contains public postal address points, the closest of which is three thirty-five Hoover Ridge, Madison County, Virginia two-two-seven-two-seven. we have a letter here from the Piedmont Environmental Council that came in on yesterday. Uh, I'm not going to read it into the record, I'm sure everybody has looked at it already. Uh, whereas I know that was the only other public comment and writing. Mr. Webb?
I'm happy to say this is not need VDOT or VDH approval. Thank you. Um, and as I've always said with cell tower applications, we, we get lots of information based on our ordinance. And this is sort of just the, the non-visual aspects. You know, you have the balloon test, um, you know, the, these are complicated applications with, with a lot of moving parts. And quite frankly, a lot of it, I, I don't quite fully understand. Um, but I think the tower usually, the criticism is visual. Um, I think in this case, the applicant has, which, the county here, of course, N B and C, Elijah Kaiser is sort of the, taking the lead on this, and I appreciate all there, they have done. I have to tell, also say Brian Gordon, uh, they have been, we've met every Wednesday when I could make it, it seems like I was late or missed some of the meetings, but, uh, they were diligent in getting this application together. This hundred, us pages of, of application, which, again, in my years of doing this, was technically complicated applications there are, we can talk about that at a, at a later date. Um, but, uh, I think the most important part is what will it look like? Uh, but more important is what is the use for this? And of course, this is a, for our emergency communication services. And the conversations I've had with Dr. Gordon, uh, right now, we have about sixty to sixty-five percent coverage in our county for emergency radios. Once this is constructed, uh, in conjunction with the Hughes, Hughes River site, we're looking at ninety, ninety-five percent of the county having, uh, emergency service communications. Um, and you might have read something the other day that was reported, that down in the Uno area, we actually had a situation where there was a fire. It wasn't, fortunately, nobody was hurt, but the Fire Department was called, and there was no, on their report clearly says, no. was no, on their report clearly says, no radio service. That is a, and I think, being said last time, and I have to say this, if it saves one life, it's worth it. And that's, that's the way I look at it. And I think most, majority of people look at it that way too. So having said that, Alicia wants to come up, I think one of the questions maybe that I have was the difference in the lattice and the monopole and why they're doing the lattice here versus the monopole. And I'll let, Alicia wants to come up and talk about that.
All right, first off.
You let she go.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Questions from the Planning Commission on this cell tower? I'm sure everybody has read the application online. Would you like to approach the podium? Give us your name, please, for the record.
My name is Alicia Kaiser. I'm with Network Building Consulting and also work with Monorola and the county to implement this improvement to the public emergency communication system. The tower that we're proposing is on county property and it is, I mean, you pretty much did a summary, 195 foot tower with four-foot lightning rod. It will not have a new entrance, which is why we don't need a VDOT permit. It will be no, you know, habitable structures on it, which is why we don't have Department of Health. And the reason for the self-support tower versus the lattice tower is, one, for pearly ordinance, you have to have room for future carriers if you're over a certain amount of height. I'm trying to get that. And we, in order to accompany that many carriers, plus the equipment that we're putting on now, which comprises of microwave dishes, we have to have the ability to negate the twist and sway and that a monopole would not be able to accommodate, whereas a lattice structure, the tower and the foundation can accommodate that twist and sway. Or any more questions?
Lisa, correct?
Alicia?
Alicia, any questions from the Planning Commission? For the applicant? If not, thank you very much. Any questions from the, the audience? Comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. There are no more comments from the Planning Commission? Can I get a motion on this case?
I recommend that we put to approve based on the SU-05-21-05.
Got a first?
Second.
All in favor, recommend this for the Board of Supervisors? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. The last item on our agenda tonight is Mr. Webb wants to address the review and requirement notices for existing primitive campgrounds versus county-state regulations. Mr. Webb?
So just a real quick, this is around the campground conversation. Like I said, this is sort of the new thing with a lot of the online proliferation of camping, primitive camping. We do have, it was brought to my attention when I was working with Buchanan's that there are other, I don't want to give a, there's several others. I don't know the exact number, but we do have other primitive campgrounds. It's sort of, like I said, it reminds me a lot of the Airbnb where a lot of folks start doing it and then they sometimes come and get, you know, ask for forgiveness other than permission, as they say. I think we have an opportunity here in Madison really kind of maybe, I don't know, be a leader, but to, to embrace these campgrounds provided they, I believe we've kind of shown tonight the path forward and I guess I'm just going to, while everyone's in the same room, is what I'm planning on doing is contacting these primitive campgrounds here shortly to have them come in and go through the process for getting a special use permits. Our policy, at least the policy that we've had on Airbnb, is that if it's a single house and a single lot, then we've allowed them to use it by right. So if you have a second one, then you're a lodging facility and you're coming to get a special use permit. So I guess as, as a group, are there any thoughts in the Planning Commission on this sort of approach? This be the preferred approach? And of course, I'd ask the same thing to the board. You know, the folks who do it, we collect transnationality tax. I feel like if we're going to collect, and the Commissioner does a very good job of revenue of, you know, going on sites like Airbnb and VRBO and making sure those folks are paying the transnationality tax and do the same thing with campgrounds. I guess was there, just talking about this policy, sending them a letter, and the first question they're going to ask is can we still operate until we get it? I think it's a fair question, some of, you know, again, it's, I've tried to cast too much judgment on folks like this because when it comes to these type of new technologies, this is just how it works everywhere. I think a lot of places in the larger areas, especially with Airbnb, they kind of went through, we're going to make everybody get permitted, and they just sort of threw their hands up and said, hey, you're transnationality taxed. I just want to get some feedback, at least from policymakers and deciders here, is what would be a preferred approach?
I think you're, what you're talking about is probably a good idea, but one thing to keep in mind is this ordinance went into effect, I think, about five years ago. I'd have to check the date on it. And anything that was in existence prior to that time was grandfathered in. So, and we knew there were existing ones at the time, I think, when this was passed. So those people, they don't know what you could do with them other than collect taxes. Just a thought.
That's good enough.
Yeah. Any other comments from the Planning Commission?
I agree with what you're saying, but even somebody that was before the ordinance was written, grandfathered in, especially, I don't think we want to try and so hard shit on it, make it a special use permit. I mean, clearly we want to know that they're out there and they're paying our transnationality tax, but I don't, I don't see the point in trying to do that as a special use permit that grandfathered in.
And that was done on purpose, I think, but the Board would have to address that.
Right.
But I recall that meeting when that was passed. But yeah, but your proposal is to go out and try to talk to these people that are, that have these existing primitive campgrounds?
Right. And have them, you know, and not all of them are grandfathered, I know that. So.
I'm sure of that.
Right. There's some, and I didn't think about that, but that's, that's a good point. So, but, and really what's happened is the technology has just made it so easy to go out, put a couple of campsites up, and you've got an immediate, and, you know, the ones I've looked at online, most of them seem like they're probably complying with, they've got Porter Johns and things like that. So again, if we're going to make them pay taxes, I just feel like we need to be part of the conversations. If they're going to pay taxes, well, then we really can't say, well, go up the road, you're fine. But there is a part of me that I guess is a little sympathetic toward folks that are running a business, if they are paying taxes, and they, they don't always seem to understand, you know, why they would have to come get a special use permit. And again, I don't, I don't judge folks for that because I understand this is sort of how, how it works. But I guess what I'll, what I'll do is the ones that are grandfathered, I will let them know that they should be in compliance with VDH, and we can do a cursory review of their entrances and things like that. But for, for those that sort of like the Buchanan's are, that are operating, but haven't been grandfathered, then I, I think it's only fair if they come in and get a, and get, get a special use.
I agree with that. The, the only thing I'm thinking about here is these are not the only type of commercial businesses in the county that are not paying their taxes, so good luck with that. Any comments from the Planning Commission? Peter?
Yeah, I, I have been concerned over the years that I've been talking with the Planning Commission. There are different concepts abroad as to what grandfathering is. And I don't think, from observation, everybody has the same sense of what legal grandfathering rights are. Before, before starting applying the concept, I have a deep conversation with Sean and had a clear understanding of when the concept of grandfathering applies.
Thank you. Good point, yes.
We need to be consistent. If the people who are coming through the process have to pay the tax, everybody should pay the tax. They're going west.
Yeah, getting them to pay taxes is easy. I mean, they're paying the taxes. I mean, that, they are doing it. I think just, just from my perspective, you know, I don't call it a dilemma, is do you say, come get your special use permit, but you can still operate, paying the taxes, but let's come in and, and get, before the Board, make sure. That's kind of where I like to know the pulse of the Planning Commission and then Board.
All right. I think it's an aggressive approach to that, and I wish you luck. Anybody, anybody from the audience like to comment on that proposal, if I asked already? Yes, sir.
So I, I'm a.
What's your name, please?
Mainstream Davidson. I just recently moved to Madison County this past year. I live in Brightwood. And I'm one of those guys who just recently was fooling around online with these primitive camping options and just basically applied for the sit camp option because you have, you know, 55 acres, about a third of a mile of river drainage and these beautiful camping spots here in Madison. So I applied and just over a very short period of time, we are filling the camping sites. So I know I need to pay taxes, I know I need to do, I know I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get my permit, I should pay my taxes. But what I want to mention, what I want to say is this, you know, this is this past weekend, and this has all happened over the past two weeks, and that's why I'm here tonight. I want to settle, you know, get it right. But just this past weekend, you know, we had 16 people there at our house, primitive campground, no structures, tents, that, you know, in the evening, throughout the day and during the evening, you know, they're in Madison County going to our rooms, our wineries, they're hiking our trails, they're going to our grocery stores, and they're bringing revenue into the county. So I think that there's real opportunity here to set the conditions for people to be able to do that. So I just wanted to spring that up from someone who's actually, you know, just kind of dipping into this over the past couple of weeks.
So you just started this?
Yes, I just started it just a couple of weeks ago, and it just simply took off.
Fantastic.
So I have to be careful about how I look forward because I want to make sure I'm doing what's right with the county's permanent use.
Great thing to do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's the conversations I have with people all the time. And I want to, you know, so, you know.
Respect his honesty.
Yeah, literally. You know, Paige likes to call themselves the cabin capital. I mean, maybe we could be the camp capital, but you know, I, I'll put some thought on it, and my inclination is not to go tell them, shut us a campground down, but to try to work with them and, and see if we can make everybody in this room happy and, and make sure it's safe and everybody is, you know, going to a place that, that has some basic amenities that, you know, ensure safety. So we can continue to work on that. And, you know, I appreciate that comment because I have comment, I have conversations with people. I've gone to places and stayed in places that maybe weren't permitted myself, so I, I get it. People just, that's, this is, the behavior of tourists and consumers has changed in ways that we never anticipated with land use the last few years. This wasn't an option. You explained this to me 20 years ago when I started, I would have, I would have understood what you're talking about. Now it's like, you, two weeks ago, you set up, you do a few things, and you've got your, you've got a business. So, okay.
One recommendation, if you, you know, you want to pursue that, maybe you could publish an article in the local media explaining that these people should come forward or whatever, just a thought, you know?
Do an amnesty period. I mean, I.
Absolutely.
I just think they're good businesses, they're clean businesses. And most of the folks who, who do it are very thoughtful. I've run into very few situations, these, the way they're reviewed, people who use these sites, give potential future users a lot of confidence. It's like Airbnb. I mean, that's what I always use when I travel. So I, I think I, what I'm hearing is, listen, Plan Commission, give me some latitude to sort of develop something and work with the folks to maybe get them here, make sure everything's safe. But our permits, I can do that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the Planning Commission, from the public? Everybody stick around for the Board of Supervisors to make the ultimate decision on these cases, please.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn.
Yes.
I have had an opportunity to review the code and I think Mr. Carpenter is on to something. I think that the operative section isn't for, I think he said that it was 1411. I think it's actually 1443, which enables the Board of Supervisors in granting a special use permit to impose reasonable conditions such as, but not limited to, and it lists several things. One of those that it lists is provision for adequate ingress and egress to public streets and roads, as well as proper drainage control on the site. What we have, as I understand it from VDOT, is from the, and it's really not a detailed letter, it's a one paragraph thing from Ms. Bed, from Bedsal, Willis Bedsal on this matter. And it's, it's not, it does not read as an absolute to me. And what the code provides is provision for adequate ingress and egress to public streets and roads, as well as proper drainage control on the site. If this Planning Commission is confident, comfortable that those have been met based on the comments made by the landowners and by Mr. Webb, the Planning Commission is well within its rights to vote as it did.
We have done that.
Understood. But there was some question as to whether it was appropriate.
We would have to talk about that.
Yes. You asked me to look it up, I looked it up.
Thank you.
And that's what required, and that's kind of, not to be dissuaded, that's what I was sort of.
I think we will put this on our next workshop agenda to discuss this a little further. Make sure everybody has a good understanding. Thank you. Anything else, Ligon, that you want to comment on for this?
That's it.
Anybody from the Planning Commission, any comments? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn? Wait a minute.
Stay in session so that Mr. Broadbent, if there's a present, y'all should be able to ask some questions and things of that nature.
Okay. That was very good. Didn't know if you wanted to do that approach or not, but that is great. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay.
All right, so Planning Commission has suspended, like I called the Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a forum, we do need to adopt and turn it up. We also have the presentation, and then we do have a, we have a lengthy closed session. If you have anything we need to add, need to. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion, you're in the Hall of Service, it's about saying aye. Same size. Case number SP-05-21-04, site plan have been submitted by Dr. Oscar Pacato.
They do, but they, that's.
Tonight. Uh, develop, developing a 2.24 acre D1 business zone parcel. The subject parcel is located in Phase One of the South Park Business Park adjacent food line shopping center. The parcel is proposed to be improved by a two-story dental and general office space building with parking. The parcel is identified on Madison County Tax Map is 48-13Q. Ms. Baines, Ms. Gentry, Ligon, you got anything to add?
No, like, like I said, I think we're in really good shape on this. This is Phase One, and our staff is happy where everything is.
Any questions, Ligon? Ms. Gentry, Ms. Baines, do you have any other questions for them? Board?
Nothing seen, right now.
To the public, to the public. All right, back to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number SP-05-21-03. Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion, you're in the Hall of Service, it's about saying aye. Same size. Case number SU-05-21-04, Judson and Lisa Buchanan have submitted a special use permit application to operate a primitive campground on A1 agriculture zone parcel. Parcel is 22.4 acres and it's A1 zoning district, a primitive campground required a special use permit. The applicants are, the applicant, the applicant is proposing to throw a four campsite and first submitted proppers, if approved, the special use permit will not be transferable or assigned. In addition, the applicants are required to follow VDH got ready. In addition, the applicants are required to follow the DH got, the DH guidelines regarding on-site bathroom facilities and pot of water. The subject parcel located on Duatt Road Route 642, to date does not have a postal address. The parcel is identified on Madison County Tax Map 52-45.
I just appreciate the conversation we have with the planning commission, and again, just with the issue at the entrance, I just feel with all my heart in studying this, that it's a proper decision, and it's, we appreciate the VDOT input, and, but ultimately, I believe we have the control over the way the land is used. I believe it's a common sense decision. The only thing I would recommend, if you look at my conditions, that if you make a motion to approve, that you just remove number two, and one, two, three, four, and five would be a condition of a special use permit. Other than that-
Any questions, Ligon? Not to go all face, but what the planning commission and Ligon were just talking about, that was direction we'd like to see Ligon proceed, sounded all right, a burning marketplace, so then- Appreciate the honesty, I would say I've been in operation five years. All right, any questions, Ligon? If you can, anything to add?
I've got a question for the board, you can. So, Mr. Buchanan, one of the conditions in here, that it'll be limited to four primitive, four campground sites. I mean, you've got 22.4 acres is the likelihood that if this works well, you'd be backing here later on to expand this.
We don't want that.
That's not the idea.
Okay.
I just, you know, we'll put a condition on that, if you don't have four, it's maybe you could work. That's fine, thank you. And it can always be a question.
Any other questions for the Buchanan? To the public, are we going to make comments on this?
I propose that Mr. Buchanan is in touch with the VDOT in Charlottesville, and change that 35 to a 25, simple, take a common sense. Thank you.
Further comments? All right, back to the board. Oh, excuse me.
Take a look at that entry of seven, I'm a retired VDOT employee, and I know it looks good about entry. I think one of the issues here is, and I'm not complaining about him ever may have looked at it, but Mr. Buchanan's present entrance goes off of the road at a pretty steep rate, maybe 6% or 8%. So when you're sitting in a car on an incline like that, checking a sight distance, which you're supposed to be 10 feet from the empty pavement, and look at a 3, 3 foot 10 inch obstacle down the road. Well, the most critical thing here, if at all, is a sight easement, which he owns the property, and it may require a slight sight easement, it may not require anything. But when I checked, he certainly has adequate sight distance as it is, pending building his entrance, existing entrance up a little bit where you'd be sitting level down the road as opposed to on an incline looking out of a vehicle, so. I certainly hope the board goes, and I certainly supported, and I think VDOT can certainly be satisfied with some minimum work, if, if anything. I don't see where there's anything necessary, but I'm on your side.
Sir, what is your name? Sir? Sir?
My name is Gary Deal.
The gentleman that started before, identify yourself, please.
Jim Robinson.
Thank you. Other vote comment? All right, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move case number SU-05-21-04 as recommended by the planning commission, and with the recommended conditions by the planner, with the exception of recommendation number two regarding official VDOT entrance requirements. I do think the recommendations from the, you and Mr. Deal are extent, and would encourage the applicants to pursue the safest operation of that entrance as they can, but I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion? Here in the hall service, it's about saying aye.
Aye.
Case number SU-05-21-05, on behalf of Madison County Board of Supervisors, Emergency Services, Services Network Building and Consulting, as the medical indefinite special use permit application in the couple wireless communication. The proposed WCF will provide public safety radio coverage and a direct line of sight microwave connectivity for the county's public safety system. The subject, the subject 181.1 acres, A1 zone parcel is known as Super Ridge Park, and per Article 1 zoning ordinance, section 14-13-4, uses required a special use permit. The WCF succeeding 100 feet in height required a special use permit. The WCF would be inclined to a roughly 50 by 50 square, but ten stand compound, and the lattice towers proposed height would be 195 feet, with an attached 4-foot lighting line. The subject property is located on near Uber Ridge and is owned by Madison County Board of Supervisors. The subject parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map 48-43C. The proposed, or the property contains multiple postal addresses, addresses, points closest, of which is 335 Uber Ridge, Madison, Virginia 2277. Webb, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Brian or Ms. Kaiser, anything to add? Any questions to any of this group? To the public, to the public. All right, back to the board. We do have in front of us for this a resolution that Mr. Greg and Ligon have looked over at this point. Those are the resolutions.
So we just want our resolution to just clearly state the rationale and the reasons in support of this. Staff is obviously supportive of the approval, planning commission has approved it, and we would like to just, it's, I don't think you need to read it, but just to note that there is a resolution. If I could just see part of it. See here, resolution. And I will just kind of highlight a few things in it. If the board is so inclined to adopt this resolution, put it into the official minutes. I think the one that I would just read here is, is this WCF's proposed, the application will be a vital component in Madison County's upgraded emergency radio communication system necessary to prove and increase potential lifesafe communication capabilities for first responders, and the WCF will be able to accommodate up to six wireless service providers, thus increasing wireless communication capabilities of options for citizens, business, and business alike. And again, I have leaned heavily on the fact that this is for our emergency services to increase that, that emergency communications percentage, as Brian has pointed out, up to potentially 90, 95%. The rest of the resolution just simply discusses comprehensive plan, support for this type of communications. So I won't, I don't think it's required that we necessarily read it all, but this would be the resolution that would be signed by the chair and put into the minutes and part of the record.
Yeah, that was a question. Can we approve the application, and if approved, and it can be in one motion?
You can do it all in one motion.
There you go. And Ligon just read it off.
To clarify, Mr. Jackson-
Please.
The resolution basically confirms the special, the application itself. Did I say that right?
It was a provision.
Yeah, the resolution approves the special use permit application.
Any questions on this? On what part of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number SU-05-21-05 and resolution 2021-130.
Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion? Here in the hall service, it's about saying aye.
Aye.
All right, I get all, I get all that. Now we have our presentation by the Central Virginia Electric Co-op, Firefly broadband proposal.
Good evening, and I appreciate you making time for us tonight.
One minute, please.
The first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to let them walk out and invite a couple of friends up from Rappahannock Electric. We're going to do the first piece of our presentation, and then I'll step in. So we'll let everyone traverse, and then our friends from Rappahannock will kick us off first. I'm Gary Wood, I'm the CEO at CVEC and its Firefly fiber broadband. But first, we're going to have, a lot of thought, John. Here he is, from Rappahannock talk to you, thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, and both board members and commission members. I'm John Hewer, the president and CEO of Rappahannock Electric Co-op. And with me this evening also is Mark Haunton. Mark will be helping us address any questions, but first of all, thank you for your time, and thank you for all that you're doing to serve the community, and we are delighted to be your energy provider. We want to talk with you tonight just a little bit about partnership opportunities between Rappahannock Electric, Central Virginia, and Firefly. And let me just quickly cover Rappahannock's backdrop to help kind of set up the discussion, and thank you for the clicker there, see if I can make it work. So first of all, you know, your co-op today is serving portions of 22 beautiful Virginia counties, and we're delighted to be that provider. We've grown to 170,000 services, we have 430 employees, and are constantly working to make sure that we're on top of maintaining the system and meeting the growth needs for the future. Here in Madison County, you'll note about 7,500 accounts, active accounts or meters across the county, and just over 1,000 miles of infrastructure of distribution lines. So around seven accounts per mile, which is one of the challenges for the rollout of new services, the lower densities, of course. If you look at Rappahannock's service territory, we have, according to the FCC's records, we have about 46,000 underserved broadband underserved locations. The number is undoubtedly probably quite a bit higher, given some of the ways that the FCC has tracked those metrics over the years. But nonetheless, we know and we're keenly aware that several of the counties that we serve and many of the members are in need of services, and this data is a couple of years old now. If anything, the COVID and the pandemic situation has just that much further increased the need for broadband services. At the co-op, there's a couple of drivers for us, the reason for us to be here tonight, and our whole theme is better together, Rappahannock and Central Virginia and their Firefly affiliate all working together. But we're keenly aware of our underserved territory. We've engaged with our membership, residential, commercial, industrial, tourism sites. We've engaged with our membership, and we've gotten a strong message from the membership, the co-op membership, that they're very interested in Rappahannock playing a role in providing broadband or helping to further broadband. We know that from the grid perspective, just like the storm that rolled through last night, we had 20,000 accounts off, and our team worked all night to get the lights back on through several of our counties. We know that communication services will enhance our ability to monitor, maintain, protect, and restore the grid. And then lastly, I would just say that, and this varies county to county, town to town, jurisdiction to jurisdiction, but each of the 22 portions of counties that we serve have different objectives related to economic development. But one way or another, broadband and connectivity and the infrastructure for connectivity plays a role in that. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce conducted a study, I think, I think it goes without saying, that for the Commonwealth, universal service would equate to billions of dollars in sales and millions of dollars in employment income, and thousands and tens of thousands of jobs across the Commonwealth. So there's a clear, consistent need for organizations that are able to play a role to step forward. I want to kind of just introduce and make sure that you're aware, Mark Haunton, and Mark, if you'll give everybody a wave there, Mark is new in his role as our Director of Broadband and Fiber Services. So we are positioning the organization, a couple of key roles that we have added lately have been an Economic Development Director, and then also Mark's role with respect to fiber and broadband. We are putting in place the people, the infrastructure to help support solutions. And lastly, before I turn this back over to Gary, and maybe we get into some conversation following his slides, I'll just remind the board and the commission that Rappahannock is already well underway with the installation of an 820-mile fiber backbone that traverses through the counties we serve, interconnecting over 100 of our substation sites. So that project, the co-op, is already committed to, it's on the scale of 30 to 35 million dollars. We originally anticipated that project to be five years or more. We are now working to accelerate that as rapidly as possible, looking at actually a turnkey provider to help turn that project out in very quick order. So that project is well underway. With respect to the opportunity for us to partner with Firefly, we, Rappahannock, can play a key role. Our vision for this would be that Rappahannock would own the fiber optic system. It would go on the Rappahannock poles and infrastructure that we're already working to maintain, so we can bring the capital and the other strength to the table to help make this type of expansion possible. With that, we would also perform what's called system make-ready. So once the initial designers go through and they identify locations where ground clearances or distances or sags or tensions might not meet our code and our requirements, we would have crews in an express fashion come through and work to make the electric infrastructure ready for fiber optic cabling. So there's a real opportunity here, a real advantage for REC and Firefly and Central Virginia to work hand in hand. Cooperation among co-ops is core and is fundamental to our business model. We do this in many, many ways, so many ways, from insurance to financing to our legislative work. We are constantly working hand in hand with co-ops in the Commonwealth and quite honestly, across the nation. So with that, I'll turn it back to Gary, I think he's going to talk about Firefly, and myself and Mark are available to address any questions that come up with respect to Rappahannock's role.
All right, thank you, John, and we love having a partner like Rappahannock that gives us an opportunity to expand with Firefly is doing. So in 2017, Central Virginia Electric Co-op did a study of what it would cost and what it would require for the electric co-op in Central Virginia territory to build fiber to every home, and made the decision that we would do that. In the state of Virginia, co-ops aren't allowed to sell internet service. So we had to create the affiliate Firefly Fiber Broadband, which leases the fiber from the co-op and sells internet service, because co-ops can, while they can't sell internet service, they can own a company that does any legal business in Virginia. They just like to keep honest, link separation, they want to make sure that the internet service not being subsidized by electric rates. So we are Firefly, and tonight, I've got my Firefly shirt on, I'm with Firefly. We are talking about a partnership with Rappahannock that'll look a lot like the Firefly partnership with Central Virginia, its parent. It's just a different co-op that will own the fiber, lease it to us, will be the internet service provider. If we make this work, and I think we can. So Firefly was started in 2018 officially, we did that study in 2017, started the project in 2018, only owns subsidiary. We have already built, since we started our construction August of 2018, we're past about 16,000, locations have 7,500, we're actually over 8,000 now. The slide's a couple of weeks old, and we're moving pretty quickly. We will continue to build, and Central Virginia Electric Co-op will finish its construction in 2022, middle of next year. It fits well for us to start up a project then with a partner in other areas, and so it's a good fit for us with Rappahannock. We've also formed a partnership with Dominion- We've also formed a partnership with Dominion as well as Rappahannock to look at some other areas just outside the Central Virginia Territory. And we actually are talking to Appalachian Power and another co-op to the south a little bit. So we're not trying to become a huge player, but in areas, rural areas, where there aren't other providers, we're comfortable with very thin margins. We understand what it takes to build rural infrastructure. We're willing to accept the level of return we can get in a rural area. So it makes us a good fit to look at those rural areas. But we're looking at a regional project overall. We're including Madison County, along with Green and Culpeper is kind of one area that Rappahannock serves, where we're looking at providing service to all unserved locations in the county. So unserved is a key word up there, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But the project will be kind of two phases this summer. We're going to do a study, define where unserved areas are, come up with a total cost for that, look at what we believe we can get in terms of support from the state grant program, the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative program, and then probably ask for some local match. The reason we ask for that is partly because the state program awards extra points in their grant program. You're more likely to get it if there's a certain level of local match. It really relies on a partnership of both the utility, the internet service provider, the locality, and then the state and their grant program. Here is Madison County. This is just a quick, rough map I put together that gives you a preliminary look at what are unserved areas after you take into account the FCC auction that was held last winter, finished up in December, because the Virginia grant program will not fund additional construction in an area that already received funding if it's a terrestrial provider. So if a satellite company, I'll talk about that in a minute, won an award, you can still build in that area. But if there was a radio provider or a fiber provider that won an award, then the state won't fund additional construction in that area. So this area, this green area, in that auction was won by Shintel, and they bid a radio service in that, and they won the FCC money for it. This area, CenturyLink bid fiber service, and they won the money to build in there. This area, a company named Fiberlight, which sounds like a fiber company, bid radio service. So this is 100 megabit per second radio service, which is pretty quick, pretty fast. That's Fiberlight, one in that area. These are in strange configurations because they go by census blocks, which don't always align to anything else in the world. Shintel bid 50 megabit per second download and 5 megabit per second upload service. CenturyLink with fiber, you bid 1 gigabit download speed, 500 megabit upload speed. The blue area, first of all, Firefly bid and won one area down here. I didn't outline it, but we've got a portion of this that we won. The other portions of the blue areas were won by SpaceX, a satellite company. The state doesn't recognize that as a valid solution. So these areas are considered unserved by definition that they were in that auction. And those are the areas we'll start with to assume that these are the unserved areas in Madison, those blue areas. We will not be able to get state money to build in these other three colored areas. This other area along 29 and your main roads, I think you probably already have cable service. So it's considered so. That's part of what we'll find out this summer. So what we'll be doing is asking the county to help us find where the unserved areas are. We want to include every unserved area in the plan. We're putting it together between now and July, and we'll be back in August to the board saying, here's what we've been able to find is unserved. Here's what the plan is as far as the fiber build out, here's what the cost is. Then we'll show you what our revenue is. Our rates are very low, and we think that's important because in rural areas, you need to keep rates low. So we sell two speeds of internet service. 100 megabit service is $49.99 a month, gigabit service is $79.99. That includes the router. It's no contract. You don't have to pay anything to sign up. It's a really simple, we're not, we haven't purchased a lot of time or haven't spent a lot of money on marketing. We don't do introductory rates. We just, we're like a co-op. We're owned by a co-op. We're really simple. We also sell telephone service, voice over IP, because we need to do that for certain grants that we have. So we have a telephone service that's $29.99 if you buy either one of the internet services. I think it's $5 more if you don't buy any internet service. But we'll come back and show you what we expect that we could get in terms of revenue that would offset the cost of construction. I'll tell you, today in general terms, that's about $25 per month from the people who sign up. And we can project about what we think as far as how many will sign up out of how many we pass. And we'll show you that that'll pay for this much construction. Here's how much our total construction costs, and that tells us how much we have to go find in the grants. At that point, we'll ask Madison County, would you be willing to continue into the construction phase? Which means we need to go to the state and get the VADI grants and apply for that. That application is, goes into 14th of September. And announcements will be made in December. And then if everything works well, then you're under construction sometime, probably in 2022. And you're probably looking at multi-year construction by the time you look at that regional project. So think in terms of finish up by 2024 everywhere. Some places start getting service a little earlier, some it takes because you're building it out as you go. Once we move into an area and start construction, it's about six to eight months from the time the first person shows up and looks at the pole to decide what they need to do at the top of the pole to make room for the fiber, until the last guy shows up and hooks you up. So first, we do what we call make-ready engineering. Second, we do make-ready construction. They move the stuff around on the pole, then come back and put the fiber in, then we come back and splice it, then we come back and put in service trucks. That's kind of the path we take. Let's see. So I think I just went through all of this. You can look at it, but we're here today to ask you to help us this summer, identify those areas to be ready when we come back to make a decision. And then, once, if, let me touch back here one more time. There's nothing that says that we cannot build in these areas. It's simply that we can't get government funding to build in those areas. So let's say if we have fiber running along here, and it makes sense economically to extend up here or anywhere. We can build anywhere. There's not a regulation that restricts where you can build internet service. There are restrictions in where you can build electric service. But we can build fiber and go anywhere. So we will look at what's economical as far as extending service once we get the unserved areas defined and built. All right? I will also say, we're not planning on building everywhere. So we, that's just not our business model. We're not looking to go build over top of everybody. If they have good gigabit speed internet service here, there's no need for us to be there. But if the radio folks either don't show up or doesn't perform, it may be a good fit for us to extend further. All right? So with that, let me let John add a few points.
Absolutely, thank you, Gary. And then let me just clarify that from Rappahannock's perspective, you know, we are talking this evening with Firefly, but REC is having conversations with other providers in other counties. So this is not an exclusive arrangement between Rappahannock and Firefly. If there are providers that Gary spoke of in the other regions that received the FCC funding, and Mark has already been in conversation again across our service region with a number of providers to have similar conversations because we believe, again, cooperating together, leveraging the assets that, you know, the Rappahannock members that are sitting in this room have paid for and funded over the years, our best outcome is to leverage those assets into now helping provide an additional service.
Sir, which is why this is a good partnership. We're not, you know, we're not looking to take over the world. We're looking to provide service where people need it and others aren't willing to do it. So with that, let me open it for questions.
Before we go, just open it up there, everybody. Patrick Mowney is here from EDNOD. Patrick, anything you want to add or questions or comments we're taking?
Yeah, Robert, we need to ask a question. I'm interested, hope that we can, I think we have, or have already had the same conversation. Would you be looking at doing a single application for that whole region or more than three counties?
We, so there's a benefit, the way that the VADI scoring works, to doing regional applications, multiple locality. And I put it up here, but I didn't cover it very well, that we would be looking at doing one application with those three counties.
Gary, let me clarify from the Rappahannock perspective. It's possible that we could be supporting the Firefly solution with their application. It's possible that we could be supporting a third party that might also have a piece that goes through various counties. So again, our discussion here is not proprietary with respect to Firefly, but we see a real opportunity and we see a value in everything that we've done. The other thing I'll add is that where Firefly and other internet service providers already have an active, thriving, successful ISP, there really isn't a need for Rappahannock to come in and develop that exact same service. We don't need to replicate high-quality, affordable, fairly priced internet services. What we do is be a facilitator of that. I will go a step further to say that if there are providers that are interested in wireless attachments, if any of our substations or sites, and with all respect, through the Board of the Planning Commission, if your desire for urban construction in the county, but where those sites exist, we are also glad to have wireless connectivity, leveraging anything in terms of assets that we can do safely that are easy ones.
And let me touch just real briefly on the way the grant process works through the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. It runs through either a locality or a planning district as the grant applicant. We, if we are in it, we're going to be co-applicants. The funding runs through the county or planning district. And any county or planning district can have one application with multiple providers in it. They really like the universal service look this year at the VADI or Virginia Telecommunications Initiative folks. They're providing more points scoring-wise if you have multiple localities, and more points if you have a universal service application that covers all unserved areas. So there are a couple of reasons why it makes sense to take the approach that you're trying to reach all of the county. If it takes multiple providers to do that, so be it, there's a way to. Sorry, did I wander away from your question?
No.
Ops, do you have anything, and I asked you to go into the RFP process.
Now, this, I would say from the Board of the Planning Commission, probably for. Out of the box, this is like the best thing the county has seen in terms of getting internet to Madison County. Even possible. The only thing that would be better is if REC had gone down this path four years ago. We can't do that. We do have a series of things to work through. I do think we have, we've upset our apple cart because we were floundering past about three months when we finally, as Madison County, got past this idea of, we need internet and we want to make this a county priority. A lot of things came together, but we are on board to do something about internet in Madison County, reward priority. You see on our website, there's this idea that we're looking at soliciting for consultants, to help build strategic plans. This is a business about requests for information so that we can target about who some ISPs we can partner with might be. So we've upset all that, but this is good. But I say that because one of the things we would need to do is tell us what we need to do to help support you in this. And I've been in communication with Galen on this, but please understand and please understand that counties only move so fast. So as long as you can tell us what you need, I speak for Madison County, we'd like to do that. Any number of resources we can bring to bear, certainly we have county planners and economic development folks that could help with your studies. I would not underestimate the benefit that somebody like Patrick Mowney could bring to the table because, like I've said, he's one of these people that can speak Madisonese. He can speak a little broadband, he can speak PHCD. So that's not a common talent. So please do use him, and we'll, I guess, Jackson, we'll try to get straight with Patrick on whatever we need to do to make him whole. We have a few cards to play. We need to know what we need to be doing to help you.
Absolutely, and we've worked with a couple of counties in the past in the CBC area. We're extending out a little further now. But, and in fact, I'm friends with David Blunt years ago when I was county supervisor in a former life before I got paroled, and now I'm doing it. And so we'll certainly be back in touch, and we will use all the resources we can. Firefly will be doing this study. It'll be our study that comes out, but we're going to use information from Rappahannock. We're going to use information from supervisors. We're going to reach out to the community and say, here's what we think's unserved. If you're not in this map and you're unserved, let us know. So we'll do the best we can to identify every unserved location. That's what our goal.
All right, you're up. Mr. Wood, I think we need to hear your, the definition of served, unserved, and underserved.
Well, the important definitions are not mine, they're the state's as far as the grant funding. And for the state, they really don't, they make a little difference in what they call unserved and underserved. But what it comes down to is you can request additional grant funding in an area that does not have speeds of at least 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. Anything less than that is considered eligible for grants. Officially, they say that 10.1 is unserved. If you're under 10 megabits down one, you're unserved, and 10.1 to 25.3 is underserved. But it really doesn't matter, all of those are eligible. If you have access to that level of internet service and those speeds, you're not eligible for an ineligible area board grant.
By the Planning Commission, question?
Just by way of background, some of us on the Planning Commission spent several months looking at this. And we have been in touch with REC, and I think the guy to whom you report, the head of.
It's Marty.
Most efficient way to do this, I think, because the presentation raised many questions, would be to find an opportunity to sit down, small movement, and really have a thorough discussion of this. A lot of things strike me with regard to your presentation. Our understanding is that in addition to Firefly, there are several others, or other ISPs that did get money through the FCC auction to serve Madison County. And I assume, if you would, that you would be willing to partner with them as well. You're not, you. You're not, you, as you said, you're not exclusive with Firefly.
Absolutely. Um, my, really my kind of role with this dates back to March of last year. We sent every locality we work with a letter, uh, in anticipation of the upcoming FCC processes. We, we sent, uh, a correspondence, um, and then Mark C followed up to every locality to kind of indicate there is an opportunity that's forthcoming and, and the locality might want to start thinking about, are there ways for partnerships, grants and, and otherwise? And, and we anticipated that beyond the FCC funding, there may be additional funding opportunities, which appears definitely to be the case in what we hear, you know, at the federal level, additional infrastructure dollars may flow. I became the CEO of the co-op in, in August. And so from the August timeframe forward, um, this, this past August, from the August timeframe forward, uh, this has been a key theme, um, alongside, of course, everything else that we do as Electric Co-op in the midst of a pandemic with, uh, three, uh, major storm events now that collectively have knocked out about 60,000 accounts. We had two ice storms. But, but part of what I may just, uh, if I may, the board of supervisors just, uh, would love to come back at a certain point and talk a little bit more, um, about REC in general. I've been reaching out and, and visiting with, um, the counties across our region. And, uh, so scheduling has been underway for that. I'm also meeting with chambers of commerce because I want to make sure that we are connecting on what REC is doing and the ways that we can leverage. But to answer your question, sir, absolutely. We are, again, whether it's, um, our overhead facilities, our rights of way affiliated with underground network or our substations or vertical assets, we are in a position to help support. Uh, we believe that, um, there are ISPs that can provide quality service and we believe we can be a strong supporter in terms of access to the final customer in the case of this, an REC member owner.
And we all read and heard about your lawsuit that started in Culpeper County. And I gather that changed your approach to the broadband area some.
Absolutely. So that litigation is, uh, continuing at this, at this point. Uh, and we hopefully will know a, a little bit more about that in the months ahead. Uh, but around the October timeframe, right around the launch of the FCC auction, Rapid Handic did encounter a, um, litigation in Culpeper County. I'll, I'll say from a property owner that, um, we never installed fiber on and actually spent quite a bit of funds to circumvent their property. So we were, um, a bit surprised that, that we received the lawsuit with respect to a property owner that we had never put any fiber on them and don't ever intend to put any fiber on, on their, uh, properties. But, but nonetheless, um, that's the judicial process that, that we're up against. Um, REC's system wide scale, if we looked at our entire territory, which we were looking at and conducted three feasibility studies last year, um, pretty, pretty concisely between about that March timeframe and the end of the year, REC's total, total system build out would be in excess of $600 million. And, and, um, even the ARDOF funding, um, could have, could have played a role in that, but couldn't really necessarily at that scale. But when we encountered that litigation, um, right as the FCC auction had begun and had commenced, uh, we had to make a strategic decision that the scale we were looking at was not feasible. Given the FCC's timeframes and getting, given what needed to be accomplished, um, that we could not, you know, um, uphold our commitment to the FCC. So our secondary position, which I think in the long run is, is a very optimal position for us, is to support others, uh, in a, uh, in a more segmented approach. And Mark, I think it would be safe to say you're probably having dozens of conversations across our service territory now in various counties with service providers. And all of those conversations are, are very similar. We believe that we can play an active role, uh, and our board of directors is highly supportive. And again, I became the CEO in, in August, but was involved in, in some of the broadband conversations prior to that. But we, we just believe we can play a role in helping solve this. And we've heard loud and clear from our membership that, that they would like us to be involved as a solution provider, one way or another.
You, you mentioned that you would own the fiber. REC would own the fiber. Where is the capital for that expenditure coming from?
Certainly. So, um, the, the scenario that, that Gary explained would be that REC would own the fiber and we would have a lease, uh, with, with Firefly. Uh, that could be, uh, similar or different than any other service provider. If it, um, if it were someone attaching wireless infrastructure, for instance, they would probably own the infrastructure, but it might be a lease on one of our poles or, or towers, for instance. Rapid Handic has several sources of funding. Uh, we are a federal borrower through the Rural Utility Service. We also have access to, um, co-op lenders, uh, that are, um, that we've been long-term borrowers, both, um, long-term debt and short-term liquidity. So we have, uh, a multitude of avenues for that. And, and we would look at the, um, the lease revenues as the, um, as the make whole. Uh, and again, operating on, on thin margins, uh, the lease revenues to make whole and help us, um, support that type of, uh, investment for our membership.
So you wouldn't actually bill your end use customers. The ISP would bill, uh, bill.
That, that, that's correct. Regardless of who we may partner with across our service territory, we would not be the ISP. So we would not be necessarily, um, for, for those that, that won FCC dollars, they would be those recipients. We would not be that entity that would send the bill. We would be the entity that would, in this case, own the fiber and help facilitate a, a path to the home in business. The ISP, the internet service provider, provisions the service, makes adjustments to that, monitors the quality of the service, uh, provides the billing and then uses that revenue in any grant or any local community or jurisdictional funding. They use that to pay back and help offset the lease expense for the fiber capital investment and the make ready labor.
Um, uh, Mr. Woods, uh, and you might want to answer this question. You mentioned that there would be a local match. We're talking large amounts of capital here. What, what are you talking about in terms of the local match?
Um, I need to look at, as far as the numbers, uh, of folks who are unserved in the miles of fiber. In general terms, uh, fiber can, can be placed for, uh, let's say $50,000 a mile. Um, so you look at how many miles you have in your route. Uh, it will not be all thousand, I think you said, uh, it's a thousand miles total in Madison County. So if this is, uh, uh, maybe it's 200 miles of, uh, of fiber. It, it may be less than that, maybe a little more. Again, I haven't looked at that number. But if we use 200 miles at $50,000 a mile, I think that comes out to about 10 million. It would be the total investment out of that. Uh, going back and running the numbers from, uh, the $25 a month for the number of people who sign up, uh, we'd come up with what that is based on the density. Generally, uh, we are looking for less than 50% of match. In some counties, we've had as little as 10 or 20. In some counties where there's less density, it's been closer to 30 or 40 total percent that we look for from grants. Of the total amount we look for from grants, uh, so let's take the 10 million. That would be about six million, five, six million that REC would be putting up with, uh, Firefly backing it. And then we'd look for three to four million grants of that. The state would probably be two thirds. It depends, uh, on a couple of things there as far as where you're most likely to get the grant. So there are a number of factors that go into it. So, so going back, the, the local piece could be a million, could be a million and a half.
Well, we, we know about your, uh, I think we know about your Louisiana county venture. And, and you're involved in that too, aren't you?
We, we are. That's a $60 million bill to the entire county. That's a different looking project with a much bigger number.
They want to serve everybody.
Right. Much bigger number.
But their figure was 15 million. And I, I wasn't sure whether that was, um, you know, a gap, uh, whether they could account for, uh, direct, uh, state grants to the county to cover that.
Uh, that was the local portion in addition to any other state grants. That's what they, the locality committed there. But again, that's a, that's a different animal and I, I don't like to compare county to county. Um, because there's so many factors in there as, as far as, um, what the density is, uh, how much coverage, how many miles of line, there, there's just a lot of things. So that's what we'll come back to you with in August. We'll be very straightforward.
Can you, incidentally, Mr. Hewitt, give us copy, a copy that we can copy of all your slides?
Or, certainly from the REC perspective, certainly. And, and if, if there's an opportunity to come back, I'll bring a lot more.
One last question. I don't want one out of the way. Um, since there are a number of ISPs interested in this area, um, uh, and have received funding to provide service for this area, would, would you and Mr. Pontana, as a, uh, be willing to sit down with representatives of the county and discuss this in depth, um, without prejudice to what ISP we might want?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're glad to have those conversations. That's part of the reason we developed an internal team that, that Mark is, is, is leading that effort. Um, and we are glad to sit down and look at those scenarios, those objectives, what, uh, the different ISPs are seeking to provide. Uh, what, what REC will look at in this is, um, how do we leverage the resources that we have? And how do we securitize basically any type of investment that we make? So that, you know, that we're not, we're not in a position where, um, the co-op would be putting, um, significant dollars at risk.
Thank you very much.
And, and let me just say, the way that Firefly got here, we did bid on that one little corner down there. We knew that there wasn't, uh, another provider in the areas where the SpaceX folks particularly received funding and that the state would provide, uh, funding in those areas as part of their grant program. We're doing a regional project that has a number of counties in other areas. So we wanted to offer that here. But if you have other providers, we're, we're fine. We're not trying to force our way into Madison County. We really want to be part of the solution. And if, if there's somebody else that here that, uh, wants to take off, that's great. In fact, if somebody had done that five years ago or 15 years ago, we wouldn't even be here, which would be my real preference.
We're relaxing. Um, uh, the, the real question is, is, I mean, you, you right now, we have a broadband task force, which has four members on, um, and planning commission. Um, we've gone with that task force, uh, footblock multiple times about authorities, whether or not we use a form one. Um, currently we're looking at trying to find a consultant to work with at this time. I mean, what do you think Madison County's next steps in engaging with you all?
Well, uh, I mentioned we've worked with a number of counties. So, uh, we've got relationships with 12 counties already. Um, there are probably four or five of those that have authorities. Um, the rest of them do not. We have had grants through a couple of counties where the grant, boards of supervisors can't work directly with private companies and, and, uh, have grants given to the private companies. I'm, I'm getting outside of my realm, you know, because somewhere there should be a lawyer. Uh, but, uh, but that's my understanding. When I was on the board supervisor, I understood that. So the economic development authorities or the industrial development authorities in several of the counties have been the channel for the grants to officially come to us, uh, in areas when they didn't have a broadband authority. We, in two of the counties with broadband authorities, the broadband authority doesn't have the authority to issue grants. So in those counties, we went through the EDA. In one other county, they did have the authority and the broadband authority was the granting authority. So we've worked in different ways with different counties. Um, a- as far as a consultant who may help you lead, uh, or go through that idea, let me think a little bit. Um, I don't have one off the top of my head, but I can tell you that you can make it work in either using an authority or not, depending on what you want to do locally.
Other questions? Thank you all very, very much. I definitely, we want to thank you all from REC to come back and speak to us at another time. We appreciate the outreach.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. I'm always all due for us. Um, I feel very much, I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you y'all. Thank you. Great evening. Very much.
Any other comments from the planning commission? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn? I've got a first, second. My favorite say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
A, seven, for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. B, 2.2 dash 3711, 829, for discussion of the board of a public contract involving a secure contract and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy of the public body. And C, 2.2 dash 3711, A1, for discussion on the assignment and appointment of a motion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline or resignation of the county minister.
Second.